I'm going to call the July 7th meeting of the West Des Moines City Council to order and invite you all to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please sign in.
Five members present.
Ryan, have there been any changes to the agenda?
There is an update to the agenda language for item 5A, Sun Prairie Pewee Amendment to correct the applicant name, Timac Investment 4LC, so there's a memo on the dais related to that.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Okay, item two, Citizens Forum, if anybody is here for any item that is not either part of public hearings or new business, this is your time, please come to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record, we ask that you keep it civil and respectful and five minutes or less. Anybody that has any item they'd like to discuss before the city council that is not either part of public hearing or new business. All right, come on up, yeah, come on up to the podium here. Nope, that's okay, it's, yep, right there, and just, why don't you start off by giving us your name and address?
My name is Angela Allen, and my address is 6255 Beechtree Drive, room at 5203, and it's 50266.
All right, go ahead, Angela.
Okay, let me get to my page here. Okay, good evening, council members, my name is Angela Allen, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the voiceless, the animals that currently at the Free Friends Refuge. Every year around the 4th of July, our city celebrates fireworks, which is tradition, and a lot of us like the fireworks, but the animals, they're only a few hundred feet away, it's nothing like a celebration. The city's current firework display location directly outside the Free Friends Refuge causes severe distress to the pets that already experience in trauma, fear, and anxiety. They've been lucky this past year, they've had the community step up and foster out the pets, to get them out there and have them in a safe place for the night. I feel there's more to the situation between the city of West Des Moines and Free Friends, but for now, if we could just maybe work on relocating the fireworks to not cause any more trauma for these animals, and the workers that work there, I mean, that's, it's really tough. Anyway, but there's so many venues here, like, you know, Rexplex would be a great place, really, but anyways, so the celebrations, we can still allow for public celebration without jeopardizing the health and well-being of the animals in their care, and we can both be a city that both celebrates proudly and protects compassionately, is all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angela. Angela, do you work at Free Friends or volunteer at Free Friends?
No, I just...
Just citizen. Okay, okay, thank you so much.
And the last name again, I didn't catch that.
L-L-E-N.
Angela Allen.
Thank you so much, Angela.
Thanks, Angela.
Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum, come on up. Is there anybody in the chamber for Citizens Forum, otherwise I will go online for Citizens Forum. Okay, anybody online for Citizens Forum, please hit star six to unmute yourself, and again, you've got five minutes or less, and we ask that you keep it civil and respectful. Is there anybody online that would like to address the council on Citizens Forum?
Hello, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Amy Buehrer, AMY-BU-E-H-R-E-R, 8415 Mill Civic Parkway, West Des Moines.
Okay, go ahead, Amy.
The last time I spoke, I believe it was for June 19th, and, and there was such a great speech by someone, Mr. Waller, something like that, do you recall his name? And then I remembered, I wanted to add a little bit more to my statement, did anyone know that Martin Luther King's grandfather was Caucasian, white? Did anyone know that? His name is James King, and he was working in the field, and that's how he met his wife. So if you didn't know that, you might want to look it up, it's an interesting piece of history. Again, his name was James Albert King. And at the end of Martin Luther King Jr.'s life, he wanted to tell about his, his grandfather, but it was against the narrative at the time, so it makes me wonder if there was anyone around Martin Luther King Jr. as a spot person, leading him like a lamb for slaughter. Always wondered about that. Well, anyway, I doubt we'll ever know unless a deathbed confession happens. Does anyone know the song Mockingbird? It kind of goes like this, mock, yeah, in, bird, yeah, 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 okay, you get it. Well, I still haven't been paid my award from the judge and from the city of West Des Moines, and you can make out the check to the owners of the property, and don't forget the interest accrued since October of 2024. Okay, well, I gotta go, I've been dealing with this since October of 2024, and if you would, please remove that tacky fence that you put in front of my property if you don't plan to pay. So just make out the check to the property owners and put it in the mail, and quit being mockingbirds to the same old thing, trying to delay the process. All right, you guys, thanks, have a great one.
All right, thank you, Amy. Okay, anybody else online for Citizens Forum? Going once, going twice. Okay, Citizens Forum is closed, we're going to move on to item three, Mayor Council Manager Report, Other Entities Update, and I'm going to start down to my right with City Manager Tom Hadden.
Your report, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Councilman Hudson.
Oh, just a short report, just saying, it was wonderful to see everybody at the 4th of July Parade, and it was on this past Thursday, or past Friday, on July 3rd, Thursday, Thursday night, it was great to see so many residents and people from all over the metro who came out to the parade, so I just want to say a special thank you to our Parks and Recs folk, Parks and Rec folk who put on a great parade, I think it went really well, and it was, again, awesome to see all the smiling faces, and that'll conclude my report.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Councilman McKinney.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll keep it short as well, echo Councilman Hudson's comments, thank you to everyone that participated for all the work that went into it, I think it went very smoothly, it was a great celebration.
Yeah, I would also echo what these guys are saying, I think everybody would, I mean, phenomenal job putting on the parade, you know, it seems to us when we show up that it's just an easy thing, but we know that it's not, all that planning and coordinating and three and a half miles worth of parade floats and people walking, there's a lot that goes into it, and I know that Parks and Rec really works hard to pick up the slack for others and fill in when needed, and, you know, here we are in the parade, and we, we get done, and then we can go celebrate, and they've got hours and hours of making sure that everything goes smoothly, and they did a phenomenal job as usual, so thank you to Parks and Rec. Councilwoman Hardman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I too will say ditto, 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 I want to thank Ryan and his team for all the work that they did for the parade, I mean, it's really kind of interesting, it's, it's not only just the day of the parade, it's being accessible several days before the parade, I made several calls to Ryan, Ryan returned your call right away, texts you right away, gives you all the answers you need for people that are doing it for the first time, so I want to thank you for the pre-service, Ryan, and your team, and thank you for all the things that you did during the parade, I would ask that you put in for a cooler day next year, it was so hot, no, we don't have any control over that, but it was a scorcher, I think after the parade, I felt like I almost had a heat stroke, it was so hot, but I do want to thank Councilman Lotz's wife, his lovely wife, for really, really, really providing some relief for me after the parade, I want to thank you so very much for that, and I want to thank my colleagues for being there, and we had a good time, and it was a wonderful time to celebrate what this holiday meant. I'd like to also put in a plug and a thank you to Catherine and her team, and the Civic Connect Program, that's a program that is put on by the city, I mean, by the West Des Moines Chamber, and I think it's headed up by Robert Palmer, but they had a wonderful speaker, Governor Vilsack spoke for almost 45, 50 minutes about journey and service and public service and the like and works, and it was a really neat program, attended well, and so I want to thank the Chamber for the Civic Connect Program, but I attended it last week.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Trevillion.
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Lotz.
Yeah, I'd also like to just say ditto to the 4th of July Parade, what a great job that was, how much fun that was. Tonight, also want to call out, Your Honor, item 4G on the agenda, I'm really proud of our, of our municipality, our city here, for the work being done on places like Legacy Woods, and for purchasing the art that hopefully we will approve tonight, I was just telling my nephew Oliver Lotz in Omaha, that, you know, who's a budding artist, that you can really, really, really impact the world in a positive way and make a good living while you're doing it by doing these things, if you get in the right sort of set of work and whatnot, and so I'm, I'm really proud of our city for doing these kinds of things. Legacy Woods, just, I see all the work going on down there, and it's just going to be awesome when it's done, so, thank you, Your Honor, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, Councilman. With that, we're going to move on to item four, Consent Agenda, we are going to poll item four, C6, are there any other items that any councilperson would like to have polled and voted on separately? Otherwise, I would take...
Move for their major.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, then, item four, C6, Come and Go, LC, Doing Business as Maverick, 5403, formerly Come and Go, number 98, 5760, Rack and Drive, Classy Retail Alcohol License Renewal, I would ask if somebody would please move...
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved, there's seconds, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, moving on to item five, Old Business, item 5A, Sun Prairie, southwest corner of I-80 and I-35, interchange, amend the Sun Prairie Plan Unit Development Ordinance to align the Pewee language to build, to the built environment, Vista Apartments, LC, and Timic Investments, we've got an ordinance amendment for approval of the second reading, waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form, and there are no outstanding issues and no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at our last meeting.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Five yes, nor in the City Code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, and the Sun Prairie Plan Unit Development Ordinance Number 25 pertaining to Plan Unit Development District Regulations and Guidelines.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Move to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 5B, Ordinance Amendment, amend Title IX zoning to modify regulations pertaining to second dwelling units, city initiated, we've once again got an ordinance amendment for approval of the second reading, waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form, there are no outstanding issues and no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at our last meeting. Somebody want to move consideration of the second reading?
Motion to consider the second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Five yes, nor in the City Code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, Title IX zoning pertaining to second dwelling units.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item six, Public Hearings, item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment to City Code Title IX Zoning, Chapter Two Zoning Rules and Definitions, and Chapter 15 Off-Street Parking and Loading, modify regulations pertaining to off-street parking requirements, and establish regulations for vehicle impact protection devices initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
June 13th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have you received any written comments to this hearing?
The Plan and Zoning Commissioned by a vote of five yes with two absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amendment.
Okay, anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on item 6A, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, anybody online hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on item 6A? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, we've got an ordinance amendment for approval of the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues, this was also approved unanimously by the Development and Planning City Council Subcommittee with Councilman Trevillion sitting in for Councilman McKinney.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, nor in the City Code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, Title IX Zoning, Chapter Two Zoning Rules and Definitions, and Chapter 15 Off-Street Parking and Loading pertaining to off-street parking requirements and vehicle impact protection devices.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment number seven to the Iluvian Urban Renewal Area initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
June 27th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have you received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience who'd like to address the council on item 6B, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on item 6B? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed, we've got a resolution approving amendment number seven to the Iluvian Urban Renewal Plan, and there are no outstanding issues, this was also approved unanimously by the Finance Administration City Council Subcommittee.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah, this came before FNA back in February, and if we are truly going to see some more development around the bypass, which according to a register article could be a future interstate, that was an interesting article to read, Interstate 435, maybe 835, most likely 435, maybe in three, four, five years or something like that, but basically, if we're going to continue to encourage development down there, this cost-sharing agreement with Mid American and future developers is the right way to go, so very supportive.
Yeah, to that point, and then Councilman McKinney, I'll recognize you, but we've been, we've been dreaming about this for a little while, I mean, if you look at a lot of big metros, they have not just one loop of interstates around the city, but a second loop around that one for traffic flow and whatnot, and, you know, someday, it's our hope that, and I presented this to the DOT Commission, that this one day would be part of that interstate system, so, and I, I think it's, it's possible, just maybe a little ways down the road, so. Councilman McKinney.
Yeah, no, Mayor and Councilman Hudson, I echo that comment, I think it's exciting to see where that may go, and I appreciate the work that Mayor Trimble U. and Tom Hadden, you through the MPO have undertaken to get the Iowa Legislature to pass a legislation to, which is a first of a couple steps to get this moving forward. Now, obviously, that's not the item that's on the agenda here, but it is important, important component to economic development maybe in that area, but equally important is the gas infrastructure that this is about, I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of investment in that area, we haven't seen a lot of growth along Highway 5, we're starting to see activity, and I think when we can work with good partners like Mid-American Energy to do things like this, it's a win-win, and hopefully a long-term win for our city, so, thanks for the work you guys did at FNA to move this forward.
And thank you for your work on MPO as well. Councilman Lotz.
Yeah, I'd just say, I'll agree with everything Councilman McKinney and Hudson said, this is a piece to the bigger picture, and it's an important agenda item tonight, so I'm, I'm excited to see it finally come up on the agenda since we approved it in February, so, thank you.
Yep, absolutely, okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Community Development Block Grant, 2025 through 29 Consolidated Plan, 2025 through 26 Annual Action Plan, 2025 Language Assistance Plan, 25 Outreach Policy for Minority and Women-owned Businesses, and 2025 Citizen Participation Plan initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
June 25th and 27th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have you received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on item 6C, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, anybody online hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed, we've got a resolution approving, for approval of the Community Development Block Grant Program Plans, and there are no outstanding issues, and this was approved unanimously as well by the Finance Administration City Council Subcommittee.
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Certainly, thanks, go to the entire Community Economic Development Department, specifically Christine Gordon, who I thought I saw in, saw, who I thought I saw in the room, because I know the enormous amount of effort and work she puts into this, so, this is, this is outstanding. As a reminder, this is money from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development from HUD, and this year, we got a record number of $328,000, which allows us to reinvest in our community, and one thing that's really exciting about this is park amenities in cities low or moderate income tracks, census tracks, and that's going to make a real difference, especially for the kids in our community, so, our Parks and Rec Department, which already does an amazing job in so many different ways, has an opportunity to really enhance those amenities and provide real quality of life value for, of course, not just the children, I know adults can use parks as well, but that's an exciting component, and I think it's a really, really good usage, so, thank you for your creative planning and the work that you put into this, as always, Christine and the entire team, very grateful.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, moving on, item seven, New Business, item 7A, The Lancaster, 700 South 88 Street, approve a preliminary plan to create one lot for multifamily residential development, approve a site plan to allow construction of two four-story apartment buildings with a total of 172 units, Bryan Iowa Housing LLC, we've got a resolution for approval of the preliminary plat and site plan and acceptance of easements and agreements, and there are no outstanding issues, but there is a condition of approval, the applicant has to pay the Grand Avenue West Sanitary Sewer Connection Fee prior to any construction, including footings and foundation. With that, can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on item 7A? Is there any discussion in the dais? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 7B, Casey's, 875 88 Street, approve a preliminary plat, plat to create one lot for commercial development, and approve a site plan to allow construction of a 4,200 square foot convenience store with eight fuel pumps, Casey's Marketing Company, we've got a resolution for approval of the preliminary plat and site plan and approval and acceptance of legal documents, and a warranty deed for right-of-way, and there are no outstanding issues, but there are two conditions of approval, including the applicant acknowledging that no building permit will be issued before the final plat is approved by the city council, and that the convenience store hours of operation are between 5:00 AM and 11:00 PM each day. Does somebody want to move?
A move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on item 7B? Okay, discussion in the dais. Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Four yes, one no.
Okay, item 7C, Plata Survey Parcel 25-49, south of the terminus of Napoli Avenue, Napoli Avenue, Napoli Avenue, I'm not sure which one, Napoli, approve plat of survey to create a 1.44 square foot parcel for a transfer of ownership, Wendover Reserve LLC, we've got a resolution for approval and release of the plata survey, and there are no outstanding issues, but there are two conditions of approval, one is the applicant and property owner acknowledging and agreeing that approval of this plata survey is for the transfer of ownership only, and two, the applicant and property owner acknowledging that the plata survey does not meet minimum lot size requirements and is thus unbuildable, as such, no improvements are to be made to the plata survey until a lot tie agreement is executed to, to an adjacent lot or included in the final plat for the immediate adjacent ground. Somebody want to move approval?
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on item 7C? Okay, is there any discussion in the dais? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item eight, Receive, File, and/or Refer, we will receive and file two resignations from different boards and commissions, item 8A deals with the resignation of Mike Blaser from the Board of Adjustment, Mike had served for at least a couple terms, if not longer, did an incredible job for us, and I'm forever grateful for his service, and so with that, we will receive and file item 8A, item 8B is the resignation of Kerry Jacobs Sherman from the Human Rights Commission, Kerry served a number of years as well, and extremely grateful for her service to the Human Rights Commission, I, I know she got a job that was a dream job, I guess, of hers, and doesn't allow her the same kind of time that she used to have to devote to the Human Rights Commission, so we thank her for her service and appreciate all she, all she did for human rights and the city, we will file that as well. Go ahead, Council.
I'd just like to supplement what you've said, Mayor, is that Kerry, as liaison to the Human Rights Commission, she has really served with distinction, she was a voice that mattered, she was a voice that was relevant, she was a voice that lifted up conversations that we need to have, and wasn't afraid to speak her truth, and fight for the rights of folks that needed it, so, we are going to miss Kerry, we lost another one, as you know, Pierce, a couple meetings ago, so, we have a couple big holes to fill, because both of those individuals served the Human Rights Commission with distinction.
No doubt, thank you for your comments, Councilwoman. Okay, item nine, Other Matters, are there any other matters any councilperson would like to bring up for the good of the order at this time? Okay, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'd just like to say that the Valley Junction District, you know, hosted the event on a Sunday, about a Sunday or so ago, it was the Pride Festival, it was nicely executed, lots of attendance, it was a hot day, didn't deter people from coming out, celebrating what was important to them, so, I just want to thank the district for their support of this event, I want to thank the district for all that they do to set up for these kinds of festivals, it doesn't happen through osmosis, so, Steve, thank you for your team and your effort, and all that you did to kind of facilitate making sure that it was a festive day, and it certainly was, so, thank you.
Okay, any other items for the good of the order? Okay, here... Okay, hearing none, we are going to be adjourned, we're going to adjourn into